Welcome Nottingham to the Nottingham Board of Selectmen's Meeting for February 7th, 2022. We will start off this meeting with the President, uh, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right. Did anybody get to look at the past minutes and to go over the manifest?
Yep, I did.
Any comments about it?
Except for the minutes where I wasn't here.
Anybody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. We approve the manifest for accounts payable for 2027, 2022, and the payroll manifest for 2028, 2022.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Excellent. We have minutes from 1:24 and we have minutes from 1:31.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from 1:24, 2022, and 1:31, 2022.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? In unanimous? Perfect. Did you ever talk to Steve?
I did. I spent some time with Steve this morning.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I did.
Will he come tonight or no?
He is coming tonight, yes. Yeah.
Steve Sorov?
No, uh, well, on the 300.
Uh, go through the boards quickly. I have a planning board meeting, which is on Wednesday night, and I missed the meeting beforehand, uh, which was talking about preliminary site review for properties that were located off Dolph Damm, uh, but I will report on after Wednesday night's meeting for what's going to happen at the planning board. Uh, budget, that's over.
Yep.
Beautiful. Uh, 300th, uh, we'll see Steve tonight on top, so we'll talk about that when we get there. Uh, CIP, we're all set and done with that, right?
Are we?
Yeah, that finished last week.
Okay.
And I believe I mailed everybody the final copy. I'll double check.
Okay.
And then Marston's, I'm sure there's still snow on the ground, it's the way it was.
A lot happening there. The only thing I can say is that fundraising continues and the NYA is taking registrations for spring baseball, I think. And they're, uh, once again putting a line on the ridge form for people to donate to Marston, and that worked out really well the last registration cycle, so.
Time Minister's report?
Let's see, uh, welcome, uh, last week you approved the appointment of a part-time, uh, police officer, full-time somewhere else, but worked part-time with us. Joe Lister was sworn in this morning, so welcome to Nottingham to Joe and his, uh, his wife, Kim, I think her name was, sorry, I met her. Um, and also welcome back Officer Landon McBride. Landon has been deployed, uh, with the Army, Army Reserve or Army Guard for the last year, essentially was overseas. Uh, I haven't laid eyes on him, but I know he's back, uh, and coming back to work, so it's good to have Landon back after, uh, a year out in the field. Uh, we also had a firefighter EMT who was deployed. He worked for us for a moment and then was deployed, uh, or I don't even know if he started. Uh, we've been holding a slot essentially, uh, for him. Uh, returned from deployment and was offered a position with another department and, uh, won't be returning to us from that deployment, so. Uh, a story that you've heard before with firefighter EMTs, so, um, uh, there's a, there was a, a paper slot there that is really open now, um, so we're continuing to operate with just two people. Uh, two career firefighter EMTs. Um, lastly, the, um, I don't know how much of, how much of Saturday's events are going to spill over to tonight, but I do have one that we didn't expect to have to talk about. Um, the, the highway department's utility pickup truck, the F-350 that was going to be replaced, um, uh, last week, the transmission pretty well failed on it. Uh, they, they brought it in last week, didn't think we were going to have to really deal with it because we thought we would be replacing it. Um, uh, but now we're faced with a decision on a $7,500 transmission replacement on a 10 or 11-year-old truck with 130,000 miles on it, uh, and I wanted your input on, on that. Uh, we didn't budget for anything like that. We don't know, um, you know, we, we, we don't know what else could go wrong with the, with the truck. We, you know, it's got to get through an inspection in September. Uh, we would not rely on it next winter. We'd have to contract our way around using it because we know we can't depend on it for a full winter season. Um, but living without a utility truck will, it, it's not just a plowing problem, it's a, it's a, you know, spring, summer, fall problem too, um, would leave us with, uh, four dump trucks and a 550 and a Ford Escort, um, not a Ford Explorer.
The old police car Ford Explorer?
Yes.
Yeah, it's not really that.
And now we're blocked from buying the replacement truck, right?
Uh, well, you, we don't have any money on the warrant for it. I, um, I don't know if there's a way around that. Uh, if you wanted to do something outside of the usual channels, we can investigate that, um, but.
It's gonna sound like a stupid question, but is there a, a lease opportunity for this type of vehicle?
We, we kicked that around briefly this morning. It's, uh, we can't lease anything for more than one year without town meeting approval, so there's, we'd be looking at like a, a monthly, you know, something like that. Um, people would be crazy to rent us a truck because we, we kill them, right? I mean, so you could go rent the Home Depot truck for so many hours, you know, uh, whatever, but, uh, no, there really isn't anything viable there. There's no contractor option to get us through this winter for it. Um, if, you know, we can, for the rest of this winter, they can shuffle routes and, and stretch routes out and, um, basically reduce service levels because you've got, you know, longer plow routes. That means more time between passes, um.
And we could also, we could also hire somebody else to come in with the truck and.
No, we, we, we explored that today and we, we don't have anybody at our fingertips that can fill that role.
No, but just to be, if we did, it's a great expenditure of our money. Instead of having our own truck, it's nice to know that we're going to blow and spend money on something where we wouldn't have to, but now we do because we can't buy a truck. Good, I'm just saying the planning was excellent for the people on Saturday, so, okay. Anything else?
Well, well, I guess I, I, I need your wink and nod to, you know.
Yeah, spend the $7,000 again for transmission.
Good money after, after bad or, um, or drag our feet or, um.
Well, you can't, I mean, what could just drag your feet?
Drag, drag your feet, maybe, maybe we find some way around with a, with some other purchase mechanism. I don't know. This is a brand-new problem for us, so, um.
Well, how long could you withstand dragging your feet?
Well, a storm or two, maybe. I think we would feel it in, in service levels, you know. We, we run five, six trucks at a time.
How long will the truck be gone if we go in with the, uh, refix?
Uh, it's quick. It's a quick turnaround on the, on the repair, so they can, you know.
And it's $7,000, is that what you said?
$7,500, yeah.
I don't think we have any other choice.
I say we do it.
Yeah, fix it.
Yeah.
There you go, Chris. Hey, when they're, ask them if they find anything else.
If they got anything news kicking around, yeah.
If they, they see anything else in the trucks, we can be prepared for, uh, future expenditures that might have to be spent on that truck, so at least we can say.
Well, we know, we know of other challenges with it. They're just living with them. They're not, they're not, you know, getting in the way of safely operating a thing. It's just nuisance items at this point, but I, I think we'd probably be surprised if it passed inspection in September, but we'll see.
Well.
Okay. That's all I had for you. Thank you.
Uh, before we move on, we're just gonna like to talk about the mask mandate, even though we can do it on a general business, but we'll just do it right now, then we'll go to our assessing afterwards. How does everybody feel about, uh, not having the mask mandatory now, but just be strongly recommended?
I, uh, I made a point of watching Channel 9 tonight, the news, and they, and they said the, the infection count, the infection rates are back down to where they were in mid-October when we did not have a mask mandate, so, um, of course, that's, you know, that's the statewide average, but, um, I think we could probably get away with lifting it for now, you know, unless things get worse again, but I, I'd be.
Yeah, I mean, I, I talked to Dale Silver today and asked his opinion of it as the health officer, and he felt that it was okay, that it was the time to do it.
I s-
I, I was just gonna say, I, I don't feel personally the need to say we strongly recommend it, but.
We should just talk about like lifting it for now, and if we have to put it back in place, we will.
Yeah, but we strongly recommend this, meaning it's just gonna be a sign on the door. Not gonna be mandatory, it just says, you know, it's when I walked into Market Basket today, it said for the health and safety of our, our employees and stuff, we would strongly recommend that you wear a mask. Didn't say you had to, just, it was just a footnote of a.
So if, if we're saying that though, then that means rightfully we should all continue to wear them.
I'm gonna continue wearing mine. That's just my, my decision. That's up to you. I mean, we don't have to say it. I was just throwing it out there.
Yeah, I mean, what did the school say? The school say masks are optional?
Just put it that way, too.
I'm happy to put it that way.
Yeah.
It seems to be working.
Those are, those are different messages to your employees, too. They're, you know, one is, one is, yeah, do what you want, but the others, do what you want, but not really.
Yeah, and, oh, I mean, do you have a take on the, the employees? Are they, like, ready for it? Or are they still?
I think they'd be comfortable with it, I, um, with lifting the requirement, generally speaking. Um, I think I, if you, if you were to switch to some form of optional, I'd probably ask that they, uh, at least for our people, I, I can't speak for the town clerk and the tax collector because they're, they're independent of, of what we do, but, um, I'd probably ask that our people match whatever the customers walk in with, just as a courtesy.
Yeah, that's fair.
It's a, that's a difficult thing to say in a policy sense, but it's just something I would verbally say, this is, this is just good form amongst ourselves when we're all working together amongst ourselves and without the public. I'm pretty sure we're all confident and comfortable doing away with it, which is the vast majority of many of our time is just our workers, so. I think that's how I would, you know, take whatever you decide, and then I would layer that on top of it as a, a request, but. No, I think that we'll all be comfortable with it.
Do we need to make a vote on that? Are we good?
Uh, tell me what you want.
We're gonna go to?
Well, with, we're gonna lift the mandate and make masks optional.
Correct.
Any motion or?
No. Like, we can, we can make do with that.
Okay.
And that's for all town?
All town facilities?
Yeah.
Yeah, start from eight?
Start right now.
We're gonna wave the fog off my glasses.
Seriously.
Okay, fine.
John, are you comfortable with us, uh, doing this this way?
Absolutely. I don't give a crap.
That's, there's my courtesy.
You know, people make their own decisions on what they want to do, so leave it at that.
Okay.
All right.
Uh, moving on, uh, the action items for last meeting, I don't really recall.
Well, we were so hyper-focused on the deliberative session.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Right, so I didn't think we even had any, except for costs. The ones for four, right.
Yeah, please.
300th celebration committee passed a mandate, tax waivers, recycling, and the validity of citizen petition warrant articles in Article 5.
Oh, that's pretty much everything we got on the list or don't need to address.
Right, yep, so, pretty much there as we speak now, anyway, so. Under assessing, did you guys see, uh, the email?
Yep. The Kelly stuff that she sent in meeting.
Correct, yeah. There's three of them and there's the Timber one.
Yep.
Is that an accept or an approve?
Well, you can say accept the recommendation for.
For, there's no, there's no variation, variances here. It's just the land use change tax.
Yeah.
So I guess we can approve what the, it's, we're approving what Chad wrote as what the value he feels is going to be for the lux tax.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion, select board approve the, um, land use change tax recommendations for map 24, lot 141 dash 2C, map 40, lot 1 dash 3, map 64, lot 1.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? That goes unanimous.
I'll make a motion, select board, um, accept the report of cut billing for map 6, lot 16.
Second.
A motion and a second, discussion? Nope, all in favor? Perfect. Uh, on our next agenda was the tax deed waivers, but as Chris just said, we're not ready for that?
No, no, that one you have, it's the recycle fees you don't have. You have a memo from me on tax deed waivers?
Yep.
So basically, uh, we start with your policy about what is eligible for deeding. Uh, the last time you saw this, the last couple of times you saw this, this list was longer. We've had some success in, uh, collecting from a number of parcels that would have otherwise been eligible. Um, uh, there's, four left. Um, one is a longstanding, ongoing property on the market situation. Two, I've, uh, had ongoing conversations with the owner occupants. Um, I know owner occupants are, are treated differently in policy, um, and they are, seem to be making some progress toward a solution, which is faster progress than we've had on these up to this point, so I've suggested that you, uh, revisit those in a couple of months. I think they'll both end up being mortgage or home equity line solutions for those people and just to give them a couple of months to get that through the usual process, um, that would allow them to get caught up on taxes and stay in their homes. And one vacant piece that we have, it, it is essentially a gift to the town. Please take it. A verbal message from the owner, not a usable parcel.
Posted stamp.
It's, uh, it's about two acres, but it's di, it's dissected by the, bisected by the river, soaking wet.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, it's, it's not buildable. It's, um, something that, as relayed to me by the tax collector, the owner thought the town had already taken, so.
Oh, interesting.
It, it's of little value. Um, it's, you know, it's just as clean for us to have it as anybody else. And, uh, you know, so.
Do you want to buy it at that price?
Well, no.
Well, that's the current use, you know, that's, if it's in current use, that's what it, it gets taxed at, so, um, uh, it's not a, it's not a big taking, uh, from somebody, um, at the same time, so that's really more of a housekeeping item. What you could do now, and if you wish, is there's a relatively small, the reason it's on this list is because your policy treats vacant land differently than homes. Um, vacant land with any amount due is up for deeding, you know, by your policies. That's why it's here, at these small amounts, so.
All right, well, I'll make a motion to the select board, instruct the tax collector to conduct necessary research, to issue tax collectors' deeds for the following parcel, being map 52, lot 13, and Flutter Street and Deerfield Road.
Second.
We have motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor? There's other properties on the list that weren't mentioned in here. We're gonna get to those?
Paid.
In full, partial?
Uh, to, to get off of the list and to get off of the risk of being deeded, they have to pay the, everything that's up through three years ago. It's only three, you know, the, what, what makes you eligible for taking or deeding is to have a debt that's three years old, so to get off the list, you have to get current as of three years ago, so you don't have to pay full.
So they could just made that one payment, that one bill from three years ago, and that makes them off the list?
That gets them off the list. Um, a couple of the subject, at least one of the subject properties I know paid the full amount due, uh, one of the bigger ones, um, that had been due, uh, that payment just came through like on Friday. I just saw it go by, so that will, it's ineligible and it's also caught up, so, um, there's two others, uh, and I think that actually two, two of them got fully caught up. One is a continuous last-minute, keep me off the list, payment kind of pattern that we've seen for a long time, so, um, legally not to be taken and legally still in their hands, and that's the way the law works.
These are consistent.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, we were gonna skip over the recycle center fees. And. Hi, Steve.
Hey, what's going on? Hey, this is not very good. I mean, this should've been a lot more banned during camp.
[laughing]
Can we do a deliberative session every Saturday?
Yeah.
Can I invoke colon 40, colon 10 on your presentation?
Before Steve, we get to you and our, because we're gonna have probably a good lengthy conversation coming up with you. Chief, I see you sitting there. Do you have anything to, just?
I couldn't come to rest or anything, just doing my civic duty.
Thank you very much. Sounds good. Steve, come on up to the table.
Wait, you waiting for pizza at liar's chief?
Yeah. So right now, we're gonna start talking about the 300th, um, celebration for this year coming up. We've already had an event, and we have some more coming up very shortly.
We do.
Uh, so we're gonna go over that and sort of budget items for people, so if you're following along, this is what our discussion tonight will be about. So however you want to start away. Did you get that spreadsheet, Donna, or?
Yeah, so let me tell you, Steve and I spent some time this morning. Um, we kind of went over where we, where we are. Um, so if you remember, the, the fund balance was 50K, the, through the revenue, um, through revenue generating from, you know, the hats and buttons and t-shirts and everything and donations, the revenue has been about $33,000.
That's good.
The projected expenses, uh, you know, there's been, I think, 23, uh, 23, 5 in actual expenses that have come in. There's an additional estimate of 63, 64,000 in expenses. Uh, I think I kind of double-checked all this with, um, Betsy. It says, I'm looking at that right now. That doesn't look right to me. The bottom line is, right now, where they are, um, i- they're right on budget, basically right on budget. So that was, I think, one of the concerns that we had when we started this was, you know, where, 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 where's, you know, are we gonna overspend or where are we? And right now, they're right on, and that doesn't even count any additional revenue that continues to come in, so. From a budget perspective, it looks great, and I'll, I'll send you guys the sheet if you're interested in looking at it.
Sure, please do. So what's on the agenda for coming up, Steve?
Oh, I mean, we get a lot of it.
Good time to pitch it to the people in Nottingham, what you're about to do.
Little things coming up, um, basketball tournament. Tyler's, I'm gonna, along with the Nottingham Youth Athletic Association, I'm assuming?
Yep. Is there a date and time?
Yeah, February 18th through the 20th.
Nice.
Starting when, Tyler, on Friday night?
We're not sure on the times yet because that is the, uh, the week most towns are on vacation, so we're working with, we, we just want to get two games out of the way Friday night.
Okay.
So, but it can't be Nottingham because they have kids in ski club or something, so it'll probably be Auburn and.
How many teams are coming to this?
Right now, we have confirmed four, but it could be six.
This is like a double elimination tournament, or is this a?
If it's four teams, every team will be guaranteed three games.
Okay.
And if it's six teams, uh, it will be like a pool play, you know.
Wait, is, is it kids?
Junior high boys.
Junior high? Cool.
Yeah.
Is there a prize?
Yeah. Pat on the back or no?
I don't know, I'm just, I'm asking questions that people might have to ask, because I don't know anything about what's going on, so I'm trying to be more.
We plan on having little trophies and all, you know.
Nice, okay.
So, it, it's very competitive, too. They're Nottingham, a very good team.
So Tyler, are they gonna provide us Nottingham youth doing food? Because if not, we can do food.
Oh, 300's doing all the.
Okay. That's. So we can sell pizza, hot dogs, popcorn?
IPA.
IPA?
No, yeah, whatever, yeah.
Okay, good, good. So another chance to raise some money.
We're gonna charge, we're gonna charge adults $2 a day to come in, you know, because if a kid might play at, you know, 10 and maybe again at 1 or something, so we'll just hit them one time and.
True, yeah.
And where that money goes to?
The 300. Well, what we're gonna do in this case, we're gonna have, so the money, I don't want the, the town to have to get involved in like paying the referees and stuff, so I'd rather have a account at the NYA, take it separate, take the money, pay the refs that they use and stuff like that. And what's left over, it's gonna be a tight budget, it's only $200 a team, so referees are like 35 a game or whatever, so, but we plan maybe doing 50/50, you know, the, the 300th again doing that. 300th raising all the money from the, uh, whatever they sell, I don't know, we'll have the numbers, but.
So NYA is covering the refs?
Yeah, because they have an account for it, but they could, it'd only be $800 if it was in there, whatever comes out from the refs, the rest will be whatever.
Okay.
What's the name of the tournament?
Nottingham 300.
Okay.
Because that's.
You gonna wait, make them wear like old-time basketball uniforms?
I think they had jerseys printed, didn't they?
They took the logo there and they're having something made up, but I told them if they only get to five teams, we're gonna make a team out of the 300th committee.
Wear the old wool uniforms and all that stuff.
Be real comfortable.
Yeah, short shorts.
Yeah.
I think they should all play in tricorn hats.
That would be cool.
That would be interesting.
Make the refs wear them.
There you go, yeah.
Um, what else is going on for February? Is that our February?
So February, we get, um, on the same day, the conservation committee's gonna do a snowshoe hike over at, uh, Marston property, so again, no, no dollar.
Is it Marston or Mulligan?
I think they said Marston.
Yeah, Marston, that's what they said.
So they want to plow off the lot and pack cars there, do the Marston trail.
Trails are all marked and everything, yeah.
So they can, um, view if, if there needs to be a cleanup, which I'm assuming there is gonna be a cleanup in the, um, spring. They get to witness nay be.
Do we have something that posted this event, that it's a 300th event?
I'm not trying to pull it up now.
Okay. So when people know they're attending this, they're attending, it's also, they're doing it because of the 300th?
So we have a postcard that's coming out.
I'm just saying when people show up for this, like, to go for the hike, they know it's part of the 300th event.
Yeah, I'm just looking, because we posted it on the Marston, um, site.
I saw it on, I saw it on the last week, I thought.
Yeah, yeah. Poster's there. Let me just double-check and make sure it does say 300.
Will that be?
It does. It has Nottingham's 300 celebration.
We can't see it, but that's the postcard, it should be out this week to everybody in town with all the different events.
Oh, nice.
Well, it's getting married.
Every resident in town.
Oh, nice.
Does it have the dates on it?
Yep.
So it's a good refrigerator item, right?
Very cool.
Yep, thank you Tyler for getting that done. Well, I haven't seen it yet, so I guess I can't thank you yet, but.
Tyler, Tyler can set up a party.
Yeah.
Right. So that kind of does it for, um, February, and then in March, um, hopefully the historical society, they always do a pie social.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it was supposed to happen on 3/12, which would have been actually at Town Meeting Day, um, but they wanted to do a pie social. I don't know if that's still going on.
Will our kitchen be done?
I think so, yeah.
So they'll host it in the new kitchen?
Uh, yeah, that's, I, I don't know if it's on that calendar, but our target date for the kitchen was voting day. We aren't voting here, so that was one of the things we were shooting for, was get it done, so.
That was talk of maybe using the kitchen here, but.
The pie social will be 3/12, right?
Right.
Then the, or play.
So we wanted to do a satirical play, um, on town meeting. Rebecca Rue out of Northwood, um, had written a play based on town meetings, kind of a comedy take on, on how, um, which we all witnessed a little bit of session now. Um, maybe not quite so funny, but looking back, maybe a little bit funny, um...
Since it's January on.
Right, right. I'm sure it wasn't much fun for you guys. But, um, yeah, there's a cast of selectmen and, and, um, people I gotta talk to.
Where would that be hosted at?
Well, I say either here in the community center, which is where we used to.
So we'd set up a stage or something in there for them to put it up?
Just do it on the floor, just like we would with the regular town meeting. Or we could do it at the school, do it up, partially up on a stage, partially on the floor. Um, where I'm running into problems is somebody to sort of run as a director. So, I thought we'd just read off the script, so there'd be no memorization of lines. But still, you probably want somebody to take over movement of people. Where should they be sitting? When should they get up and walk? When they, should they do this and that?
Do we have any drama coaches in town that would?
Well, I've reached out to a few people, of course, they wanna be paid.
People in town?
Yeah. So I'm looking for people to donate some time. So, we're still searching.
When do you plan on having this?
So I was planning, well, I, my original goal was to be three twelve, because that would've been town meeting day. But, um, right now, I get it on the books for three nineteen. Now we can postpone it and do it later on if we can't find somebody to run with it. Of course, everybody's a little scared of COVID. Will we gonna be able to do it, not do it? Just like everything that we've been planning, COVID is just really getting in the way of everything. So I think it would be fun if we could get it off the ground. Um, Rebecca Rue doesn't want any money. I asked her, can I pay you for using your script? She says absolutely not. I won't accept any money. So... I haven't reached out to her, see if she'd be willing to take that lead. But, um, on another note, oh, we're talking about Rebecca Rue. Um, Schuler Scribner, town resident here in Ta- Nottingham, uh, works for Channel Eleven PBS. He runs a program called Our Hometown. Rebecca Rue is the host. So they meet with people in town, they, they, um, try to gather stories and they'll do a film segment. You can look on PBS, Our Hometown, and see what it's all about. He wants to do a segment on Nottingham. So I forwarded him a few names of some old time residents who might have some good stories. So Rebecca Rue will be going around and maybe she thought that might segue nice into our town meeting play, so... But we're in search for a director. We thought maybe a high school student that was majoring in grammar at one of the high schools, Cole Brown or Dover, or if you guys can think of anybody else. And your thoughts? I'm open for all suggestions. Just got way too much on my plate with everything that I'm involved in to take that on.
Well, let me reach out to Cole Brown for you.
Okay.
Okay.
Would be awesome.
Yep.
Somebody mention a green girl. I can't remember her first name.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Cassidy? You wanna ask her?
You are persuasive.
Okay, that, that'd be good.
So it'd be nice to get that off. So, uh, that's kind of all we had really planned at the time being for, uh, March.
So one thing, since we have you here, we have had a while and I thought of it, um, was the parade that was gonna, is, that is gonna happen. The amount of people you were having for it.
Mm-hmm.
The route that it was going on.
Mm-hmm.
Cause it was a pretty intense route with a lot of, uh, detours and manpower.
So...
So, I mean...
Here's, personally, I don't think it requires the amount of manpower that some people think it does. I mean, if you can see a sign that says detour, you take a detour. You don't need a detail to tell somebody that's a detour.
Sure about that?
No, I'm not sure about that. I'm, I'm really not, cause people are, I, I refrain from saying anything. But, um, it should be simple enough that if you know there's a detour, that you can follow detour signs. I think it's important to have details.
Did you designate areas where people can park along the route?
We did designate places, most of the side roads. I mean, I think we did it quite intensely. Uh, yeah, we, uh, Chief Woodman and I ran Steve through the grinder pretty good on this with the, with the route.
I remember seeing some of the emails on it, but I was prepared to just...
Yeah, and, and we went back and forth a lot. We got, I think, I think everybody's bought in on the route and the parking and the schedule and, uh, the staging and the finish areas were tough and, and all that. So, uh, and D O T was on board with it.
Yeah.
Um, so it's down to where do we put people and where do we put signs? I think between Steve and the chief, they can probably figure that out uh, by the time we get there. But we're, we're a lot closer than we were on, on the route, uh, than we were three months ago. Numerous towns for signage and they're more than willing to help us out with... Yeah. Whatever we want. Committee's got a lot of runaround to do as, as part of the run-up to it.
Yes.
Um, and the breakdown of it, uh, cause we just, we don't have a lot of the materials that, cause it's a really complex, you know, not complex, but it, a lot of streets are impacted. Um, so it, it turns into logistically quite a bit, but, um, I think we're all on the same page about where to do it and all that. And, and we're doing it in the afternoon, right? We got to that point. About a twelve. So we're gonna pull the, cause it, it's right down here in the core of town.
Yep.
So, all of the post office and dump traffic that would be, you know, filling up downtown on a Saturday, we'll have an opportunity to get through in the morning and...
Got it.
So the post office was the one that we were most concerned about. Yeah. Although the post office wasn't concerned about it at all. I was concerned, I was concerned about my phone on Monday if we blocked off access to the post office.
Yeah, right. Yeah, they close at what, eleven?
But they close at eleven. Something like that, yeah, so.
Now, which, which day is this for the parade?
August thirteenth.
Oh, okay. Now I was looking up at the mini parade. Is that one gonna be?
Uh, the Alarm Ride is April...
April twenty-third.
Twenty-third, yes.
The card that you said you got, that's all of those dates, right?
What's April twenty-third?
It's gonna be, uh, we're calling it an Alarm Ride, but it's a reenactment of the March to Medford. So we're gonna have reenactors up at the square. They're gonna drill. So they'll be performing their formations that they would've done back in the day, um, with their muskets and uniforms. And we'll have a rider on a horse.
Are they gonna be using the field?
So they're gonna be using the square where they would've been doing it anyways. Um, so in front of Romy's house.
Yep.
Um, we'll have a rider come up on horseback, alarming the people that the British are about to attack us. Um, and then we will formate and hopefully the reenactors and the public will, will march down Ledge Farm Road as far as probably Poor Farm. I think that's probably Ample Walk. Um, and then we'll end it down there. We'll stop a few times and probably have a few volleys of musket firing. Just show the kids what it, what it been like back in that day. And, and pretty amazing that a group of men could've marched from Nottingham. I don't know, I've ridden that route, cause I originally thought maybe I would do a some kind of a walk all the way to Medford. Fifty-something miles. They did it in a day. We did it back in seventy-two, started out with, I think, probably seventy-five people. At the end, there was probably six or seven that actually made it.
That's a lot in a day.
Fifty-two miles.
To Medford, Mass, they went day?
In a day.
Except five miles you walked this weekend.
Fifty-two miles by today's route. Back then, it probably was much more direct and not because of the road. Much worse terrain. Um, but after riding it and seeing the traffic problems, I really didn't think we could, I mean, we could walk part of the way and we'd have to load in a bus and go the other way. But was there any interest in people actually doing that? Historically, it'd be fantastic, even if they did a bus ride and actually drove that route and seen what the guys would've had to have done.
I'd do it over four days.
Right. Well, I, then I said, well, maybe we can do it as a relay type thing.
Yeah.
Somebody take ten miles and then somebody else take, but again, there didn't seem to be much momentum behind it, so... We'll go to Poor Farm Road and, um, call it a day. You can just go back and forth till you hit fifty miles. Right. My original thought was, why don't we walk to, say, the end of the road and we go to Telly's for lunch? But they thought that might be...
Cause that's what those guys did. It took fifty-two, cause they had to stop at Telly's for pizza.
There's no doubt, they probably had a, maybe a little bit of ale on the way or possibly, but it's quite a, quite a feat when you think of it. Even if it didn't make it in twenty-four hours and it was, um, thirty-six hours, still quite a feat to go fifty miles and...
Yeah.
So, but anyways, that's, um, what we're planning on for the Alarm Ride. Um, I don't think we're gonna spend a lot of money on that. Um, actually, we need some porta toilets there and, uh, some people were concerned about having water for people. But I think most people would realize that if they're gonna go a little bit of a hike, they'll bring a, a bottle of water with them and I think we'll, we'll be fine. I think.
So we know for the next three months, things are going according to plan?
Everything going to plan.
That's what we like to hear.
Yeah. So, um, then we move into some of the town stuff that we always have done, you know, the fishing derby. Um, again, I'd like to maybe enhance the fishing derby a little bit, maybe have a casting competition accuracy, maybe a distance casting. Kids can go out and fish and then afterwards, maybe the parents can, or even the kids.
And that'll be held right here at the...
Yeah, put a kiddie pool or a hula hoop on the ground and...
Well, wouldn't we use, use?
See who can cast into it.
Use the pond right here?
Well, but how do you measure accuracy at that point?
All right, well, I guess for that, ribs.
Right. And then distance, just, you know, how far can you cast it? I don't know, might be fun, might not. If I can get some people to donate a few prizes. You know, you can get, um, pretty trade and post and boat and bass and some of them people to donate a few.
This is just a throw out there, but I'm just, I'm, I'm not asking for it, I'm not committing anything, I'm just throwing it out there.
True.
But what about at that time? I mean, about using the, the town beach area? I mean, it's the lakes right there for the fishing.
They stock the river the day before the fishing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that, I didn't know that.
Yeah. Cause I was trying to get somebody to do an ice fishing tournament, which doesn't require hardly any permits from the state. For a freshwater summer bass tournament, you go into a lottery, so. But to do an ice fishing, it'll also pay the work.
You would literally have to plan that in the next thirty days.
I know. Hence why I gave up on that idea.
Yeah.
So then we go on to, the library's gonna host a talk on Henry Dearbit, um, on five twelve. Again, no cost to us. So, uh...
You know, were all these events that he's talking about, Tyler, on the calendar?
Yep.
Oh, good.
That's awesome.
So then on five fifteen, I think's the correct date, um, we're gonna do a charter day. Reading of the charter. We're gonna have, um...
Time capsule.
And the time capsule gonna be buried out front here. Um, kid that did it did a great presentation for us, um, Brandon. Brandon's last name, but... What was it? But he did a fantastic job of his presentation. It was the, um, Summer Institute that put it together.
Yeah.
And, um... Brayden Bear.
Yep.
That's who it was. I couldn't be prouder of this young man. He did a fantastic job of presentation. He's probably maybe one of our future leaders if he keeps it up. Um, yeah, so we'll bury time capsule out here. They've gathered stuff to put in it. Um...
Nice.
And if you think you wanna add something else to the time capsule, I'm sure we could see if there's room to add into it.
How big is a time capsule?
It's, um, probably eighteen inches long and probably, I'd say, six inches in diameter.
Are you putting something from the Three Hundredth in there?
So we were, we're gonna put some artifacts from the Three Hundredth in there.
Yeah.
Um, I think the kids had written letters to themselves. And, um, they're gonna seal it up. Tyler's gonna help them get a, a spot, uh, a gap that they can put it in. Should be fun.
Cool.
At the same day, we're, we're gonna do something up at the square. We're gonna read the charter. Um, few events planned there. Uh, the Nevers Band, with the Nevers Bands out of Concord, they played when they dedicated the monument at the square. The, uh, erected that monument on the day they unveiled it. The Nevers Band was there to play. And they're still in existence. So we thought it would be nice to have the Nevers Band come and, and play in the town of Nottingham once again. So, they do a great job. If you, none of you've heard them, they, they're a fantastic, um, full-piece orchestra. They'll come and perform. It's gonna be Sunday. I don't think we're gonna start until noon time, so people that wanna go to church can go to church. If there's some sports games in the morning, they can get those sports games out of the way. And, uh, we'll go until probably six, seven o'clock at night and call it a day. So getting this in logistics. Depends on the weather. I think we can park in some of the fields up there. Uh, can probably park down in my field at my house. The other field before my place, I'm sure they will let us park there. We can pack possibly blaring tray sleepers, depending on how, I mean, it all depends on the weather.
Right. Hard ground to mud is different.
If it is an extremely rainy day, of course, we won't even be having it at the square. We'll move to...
You don't have a postponed date for that?
No, cause they, they need to move on. So we'll have to do it inside. Um, hopefully they possibly talk to the school. I think down the gymnasium, we could put the caprons down and have it in there. I don't think we'd have enough room here for, uh, I don't know how many pieces they bring in, but it's probably gonna be fifty, sixty-piece orchestra. Oh, jeez.
Wow.
So it's, it's a big, big group.
I pictured three guys with, uh, banjos.
No, 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 no. This is a full-blown...
So wait, so where are you planning on putting a sixty-piece band?
Uh, originally up the square. And if not, we'll hopefully in the gymnasium at the elementary school.
So you have to have like a stage and stuff for them?
You could buy risers. I don't think it would be absolutely necessary. Put them on the floor.
Just get pallets. That's what they did back three hundred years ago.
Right. Bales of hay.
Throw some plywood down, call it a day.
Right. But they're gonna bring their own stage with them. So they have a portable unit that just unfolds. It's got a roof on it. It's got a P A system, so they'll let us use the P A system for the reading of the charter.
Do we have pa- we don't have any power at the square in a way that you can?
I think they have their own power, but yes, there is power up there.
We have to take it from the old school, right?
From the old schoolhouse?
From the old schoolhouse that we're.
Right, cause we've always done the talent show up there.
Okay.
Years past.
A sixty-piece band, that's gonna take up a lot of space, though.
I say it's sixty, might be less than that. I haven't seen the actual. When we had them in Raymond, they came.
Steve, just talk it up, man.
They came pretty full force. Um, we had them over there. Again, it rained the day that we were gonna have it, so we had to move it into the gymnasium, but. And unfortunate, because of the rain, not a lot of spectators. Which is always a concern on a, on a rain day. Cause we had them scheduled to play just before the fireworks and then we're gonna shoot the fireworks off after. Kinda like a Boston Pops type thing. Okay. Threatened rain and we moved it. So, yeah. So, should be, um, should be a great day. So, then.
It's forty.
Forty?
Forty.
Yeah. That's still a pretty good group.
That's big.
Yeah. Great. Sometimes even let somebody guest conduct.
Get right on up there.
Wanna conduct? I don't know if we have any music people in town, but we'd probably let them conduct a piece if they wanted. Something they quite often do. So, moving along. Five twenty-four. Um, Maya supposedly is doing a cruise around town for their, one of their cruise nights, instead of just sitting in the back lot. They wanna. Everybody kinda go around town. So, don't really have a lot of details on that yet. Sounds interesting. Um, six twelve, the women's club's gonna do a T-social. I think they're gonna do it at the square, but they weren't quite sure yet. Again, no cost to us.
Anytime we wanna use the, the old schoolhouse, do we have to talk to the, um, people that actually own it?
The D A R.
Yeah, exactly, that's what I.
It is. Probably the correct protocol.
Yeah.
Catherine Fernal is our liaison.
Yeah.
Being a town resident and living right there.
Well, wouldn't that be a place to do a, a T-social or whatever?
I think it would be fantastic. Even if it, if it was a beautiful day to do it outside on the lawn. If it was a little overcast, move it inside.
Nice Long Island Ice T Day Social.
I'm all about that. So, yeah, so then, um, six eighteen, we're gonna go down in the firehouse, we're gonna have a strawberry shortcake event. I think. Still on, right?
Yes, sir.
It'll be awesome, eat some strawberries and, um. I don't know if it's shortbread or what it's gonna be, but, uh, it's gonna be great. Um.
Also coordinate, kinda like a meet and greet for people for the fire department? Just a good publicity thing for you guys. So, people can see, kids can touch trucks maybe or whatever outside and make it like a.
Touch a truck type thing?
Bring Santa.
Yeah.
If there are people gonna go for that, you know, I was trying to make it more of a family thing and have people and. See our beautiful facility that we have there and everything like that and.
Well, and that's the whole idea of everything that we're doing, let's showcase.
Our town.
What we have to offer. So, um, great stuff. I mean, um, I gotta get together with the Reverend up to the Liberty Baptist Church, hopefully on seven four, we can do a reading of the Declaration of Independence. Maybe get a tour of the Liberty Baptist Church. You know, how many of you been in that church? I never have been.
Is that?
Freeman Hall.
Freeman Hall, right, right, yeah.
I bet a lot of people have never been in it and it's one of our important buildings in the.
How old is that building, do you know?
Not sure. Did Seth Dane build that one? Possibly.
Been here as long as I have, so I don't know.
Right. No, it's, it's been here for a long time. So. I personally thought it was important to try to incorporate West Nottingham in this celebration. I mean, everything we seemed to be talking about doing was at the town square, which, don't get me wrong, that's kind of the focal point of, of our town, but, uh. We do have residents in West Nottingham and their own post office and, um.
Little plug to Demons.
I think it's important to celebrate over there also. Uh, hopefully, this is at least one event we can do over there. Welcome anybody that could suggest any other events we could do over in that side of town. I think we need to highlight, like I said, all aspects of our town.
The, um. What's the name of the church on Route Four before Sophia?
Hmm.
Higher Ground? They get a lot of space out in the back there.
Huh?
That might be a.
A site.
I don't know what, but.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know any parishioners there that I know of or any, I haven't had any contact with them, but.
Right.
I know that it's a big parcel and there's a little. Is that big enough to land a chopper in back of?
Yeah, several.
Yeah.
Oh, really? Oh, nice.
Yeah, that, that's. Maybe, maybe there's a.
Yeah. Good thought. Yeah, cause I really. You know, wanna include everybody in this. Not exclude, but include. So, yeah, reading of the Declaration of Independence, then, um, end of the month, seven twenty-three, again, we're back at the firehouse for a blueberry bacon contest. So, we're encouraging people to bake. Blueberry treats, blueberry pies, blueberry cobble, blueberry whatever. Drinks.
Blueberries here, Tyler, beautiful.
Yeah. Blueberry wine, maybe. So, uh, yeah, it should be a fun time at the, um, firehouse again with a, uh, blueberry bacon contest. So then I've been trying to coordinate with, uh, Nottingham youth to host an all-time baseball game. So, they have a few clubs in New England. They dress in period costumes. They have period bats. They prefer, I mean, if they had their way, they'd just go to a cow field and, and knock some grass down and have a baseball game. But we can highlight any one of our fields. The N Y A A can do almost anything they please, so. Back then, they didn't use gloves. So, the balls were much softer. High-fly ball, it would hit the ground. If you caught it on the first hop, he's out. So, they didn't have to catch him barehanded when they were. Doing a high-fly ball. Um, so hopefully, we can get that to go, um. To be honest with you, I think, uh, it's been a while since I talked to them. Just like seventy-five, maybe a hundred and, I think it was seventy-five dollars, and you paid the hosting team. And they would invite another team and they wouldn't give them anything. So, I said, no, I see, so I can at least pay the other team to come too, if they wanted short money. Of course, they just wanna come and promote the game. So, it's more of a promotion for them and. And hopefully, they're still in existent and haven't closed down due to COVID. It was a couple of years ago that I talked to them.
They highlighted it on Chronicle on W O M R.
Right, right. That was just recently too, wasn't it?
Yeah, they're doing it up in Hanover, I think.
Yep. So. Hey, what better time? Get together and, and watch them, a little bit of baseball and you know what? If they wanted to play some of the kids afterwards, or maybe the kids wanna play. Their dads or their mums and we can do a softball or whatever they wanna do. I mean, I'm open to just getting out there and having fun. I think that's. What this celebration should be. Bringing our community together and have a blast. Have some fun. Let's forget about all this crap that you guys just had to talk about and, um, let's just go and have some fun. So then we're on to the, what do you call the grand parade on the thirteenth? Hopefully, we can get residents to build some floats. Original thought was. Community against community. Maybe Francesca Drive versus Washington Drive versus.
Oh, your trouble.
I know, but I'm just saying, I mean, wouldn't it be great if you got together with your neighbors and you, and you did a neighborly bond?
Wouldn't it be great if you created a competition and people yelled at each other?
Well, that would be even better.
I was only we had a mechanism for that.
Throw tomatoes at each other. It'd be fantastic.
Highway Department can make a float.
Why don't we just do the lake?
Why not? Bring a dumpster.
Put a pontoon boat on wheels and drive it around.
Hey, I did see a parade that did that. They put a boat on and they, uh. I mean, it's.
It's kinda funny, actually.
Ideas are endless. Somebody had painted up a trailer or did the trailer up as a duck boat and did, um, sports legends on it. That's what I mean.
You can be Tom Brady.
So, yeah, it'd be great if we could get the community to jump in and, and build some floats for us. Um. We got some bands lined up, we got, you know, I think Jay was gonna contact some of the fire departments around, so we can, we can have some fire trucks in it and. The team of horses, team of oxen. So, it's come along pretty well. I mean, I kinda threw our hole, trying to figure out where we're gonna do it, I kinda stopped. Planning a little bit until we were sure it was something that we could pull off and do. But, um. Had any contact with state police, Hampton Mounted Police.
Do you foresee needing anything from us besides support?
Support?
Oh, we're gonna give you that anyways, but I'm just saying. I'm asking, do you see anything in the future that you're gonna need from us in order to make some of you to.
Maybe, maybe you should ride in the, um, oxen car.
Sure.
As town select boarder.
Yeah.
Again.
Put us, put us up high in, in defensible position.
Right, right. No, but whatever you're comfortable doing, I, I would appreciate any support I get, even, I mean. We talked about needing police at intersections, I mean, we could get citizens. Of some kind of authority to block intersections, so we don't have to have huge police details. I mean, somebody, I mean, we can come up with. A bright-colored T-shirt that says staff. Reflective vest and that will generate some kind of authority.
So, it, so, I mean. Steve, with all due respect to Steve, you know. Has, has his ideas of how we can do things and cover some of this stuff. I did have a conversation with Fawn. And I know that you and Fawn have had different conversations and stuff like that. Um, I added five thousand into this, um, budget, just because. And that estimate comes from Fawn about, you know, what need, might need to be provided around the parade, the reenactment and the Charter Day event. And it, it's really, uh, in case the, in case of having to get details from other towns to help out. Or paying overtime that's attributed specifically to this event. So, I mean, Fawn's gonna have to be the one that determine what is needed where and. Where we can use, you know, non-police, um, volunteers, but. I just want you guys to know that we've got some money in here as a placeholder for what police department might have to do.
So, I think that kinda covers the parade a little bit. Um, same night, we're gonna do fireworks. Um, Atlas fireworks out of Jaffrey.
Have we undergone a location for that?
So, he came down here and he says, I can do it right out here. No problem. Block off from like the bandstand back with a snow, snow fence. You know, use the little league snow fence, keep the crowd back that far and he can put on a ten thousand dollar show that blow their socks off.
So, people would just park around like normal here in this area?
They're gonna be parked for the parade anyways.
Yeah.
So, use the same parking that we're using for the parade. We can open up a little bit, I mean.
And the fireworks go like straight up and then?
Yeah. Yep.
And, uh, you don't have any concerns about that?
It's fully licensed, we've got, um, I'm comfortable with this decision. He is the, uh, guy.
He was pretty confident.
Absolutely, yeah.
Why would you wanna do it any other place?
Sounds good to me.
Oh, okay, I don't know. I.
I, I just.
I didn't even have this as a, as an option for him. And he came and looked at it and said, oh, this is all you're gonna do it? Too tall as distance, this is, the river there, the. He thought it was perfect.
He went to get three options.
Hey, does anyone get out of the car? This is the spot. Said we can go to a field. I told him we'd go down to the, um. Yeah, soccer field, I figured out back or even the town pit. Do you wanna do it at a town pit? What's the attraction down there? In the middle of a sand pit, that is totally ludicrous. At least here, you got fields, you, it's at least somewhat picturesque.
Okay. Um, one question about that too is that we need to, but we have the lights for our dimly lit, uh. Parking area, but we need any exterior road lights or something put up that day because of the amount of people that's by the track for.
I could check and get a, probably get a, the car to borrow.
You know, fireworks usually brings on a big lot of people.
Bees will.
This could be the largest event that we, you guys, that could help. You know, fireworks show in Nottingham.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and that could be, can create a lot of, uh, I mean, something that the police chief might wanna be. Uh, addressed about because, I mean, you could have two thousand people show up.
Yeah.
I mean, you could have five hundred, which is still would be a lot.
Right.
We, we were five hundred people in a park.
Well, I mean, we parked five hundred over for the, um, the Chaos and Kindness over at the school.
Yeah.
But I mean, that, that had a bigger parking lot than we got here, but that was, uh.
But we have for the parade, don't, we have a piece of, we have one side of flutter earmarked for parking.
Yeah.
And we have.
The church street with kinda earmarked.
Church with earmarked. And a lot we haven't talked about, but it's a. Eh.
You don't need your driveway that day. You could make.
Sell some, sell some tickets. And then block driveways.
Yeah.
Wouldn't impact people.
But I don't think we planned, do we plan on parking, parade parking on one fifty-two?
My like source, cause this is gonna be, when people are gonna be leaving, it's gonna be dark.
Yeah.
So, the safety concern of having lights out there on the way, if somebody has to walk from here all the way to Church Street, there ain't no lights between here and Church Street.
Right. What are you saying, Lauren?
So, some lights out there at the old fire station or something like this, so that at least makes it visible to the area that people can. You know, that do have to walk a distance, just for, whether that's incurred or we gotta rent one, and it costs three hundred bucks to rent a tower, should be something to think about.
What's the elevation on those shells? Like, how high do they go?
He'll probably only do three-inch shells. Can't imagine why he'd wanna do fours or fives or sixes, but they're still there.
Three inches is a nice shell.
It is a nice shell, it's, you get. More for you, Buck, out of a three-inch shell.
But how high do they go? Cause I'm thinking, if they go high enough, you may see people gathering at lyres.
Right.
Parking there and putting their lawn chairs out and watching the sky above, right? Same thing at the library in the old town hall.
Oh, they're going over a hundred and fifty. They're gonna go over the tree limits. If you set the old fire station in your car, you shoot, and he lights them here, you'll probably be able to see them.
See them easy, yeah.
Right. Right. I did it from the Lamprey River for the town of Raymond's. Two fifty, and you could see it, the whole downtown area. I had people up at the high school and said it was just phenomenal. All length of Eppen Street.
Well, I'm just saying, because it's a nighttime activity, it's our only really nighttime activity.
Depends on the moon, too.
I, I think, I think your point's valid.
Right.
Yeah.
Not beating the horse with it, just to...
No. Lang Park, I can see about borrowing a light tower from the town of Raymond, with a diesel generator, the light tower. We have to rent another one.
I was thinking who's supposed to play.
What?
Okay.
Uh, Claire Burbank, since she would do it.
Oh, sweet.
See, send the rain in.
You are a person of action.
Sweet.
I also, two other people that I didn't, I am reaching out to, maybe all three of them just, yeah.
Be fantastic.
But more, um, yeah.
Good.
And we just need to find out from her what she thinks for timeframes and that kinda stuff, so... So yeah.
Sort of me.
Alright. Sounds pretty good. You have a lot more left there.
I mean, we got, uh, let's see, fireworks, we got a blueberry breakfast, which always happens, um, talent show, um, our Rover and Mary Porter's gonna have, um, we'll be...
You know, I think it'd be nice come mid-time, or I know you might be leaving for a little bit for this winter. Or are you here all winter? Okay, then it's you that's here, fine, but maybe like it again after, in March, we meet with you again?
Sure, sure.
So we go get more details, since we know that what's coming up is pretty much August.
Yeah, I mean, a big pieces in August, so between the parade, the fireworks and the encampment, that's gonna be a...
The meeting's basically for, in case things change or something came up, that we have knowledge and that we can help you out with it.
And, and Steve, let's see, when I plan on meeting again and going through the budget, just do, update the budget before that night too, so we'll have that.
It's fantastic. Perfect.
I thank you for all that information, excited to see the, uh, posters card show up at the-
The card's gonna be great, that's going out to everybody in town.
Yeah.
Good.
Well, twenty-three hundred of them.
Can hand them out.
Stack in the office.
Right. On the street corner.
There's a friend of mine that's doing them, and I told the three hundred, they will not have them print three hundred, uh, twenty-three hundred booklets with the advertising and stuff like that. It's gonna be a minute number compared to that.
Yeah.
I can't ask him that.
Yeah, yeah, that's fair.
Money, cost a lot of money.
I could go out and raise you some money.
I don't know, we, he's fine doing, like I said, I don't know, I'm shooting for like five hundred. I'm, I'm fine with five hundred, cause I mean, I think we still got old town meeting books probably around here, right?
I'm just saying-
Oh yeah, we, we always got kinda stuff.
We always got those.
Yeah, we're gonna work on that.
Yeah, we can never give out all those, can we?
We're, we cut back every year and we still end up with some every year.
What do you got?
The town reports.
Oh.
Picking the right quantity on that's impossible, you know?
Yeah.
How many you got, you think?
Uh...
Have you got a full collection back as far as...
Well, the town clerk has the, the, the set of record, you know, they're supposed to have one of every one. We have a parallel set that has a couple holes, but goes back sixty years, maybe, I don't know. But, uh, do we send, send Kelly your calendar? There, she's in the last guests of producing the annual report. But if we have a page that needs, uh, something, we wanna make sure we have that in there, just?
Yep.
The post, just the postcard, right?
Sure, whatever.
That's why I was hoping that postcard was coming in before I let the print.
Oh, stick it in there? That would be a manual insert.
No, no, just copy.
I have, I have this here, if I gave, if I just sent this to her, she could probably put this in. I got the, it's, so it's-
You would take up half the page, yeah.
I got the front and the back.
Just send, just send it to her, so i- if there's a, if there's a whole-
If there's a way, we'll find it out.
Yeah, we've already printed the cover, so, you know, that's lost, but the, um, the rest of it.
There's a wholesome place.
Yeah, somebody will-
Dedicate it to, what can you say?
We'll tell you offline, it's double secret.
I got it.
It's double secret.
As it should be, until it's printed.
Thanks, Steve.
Great seeing you today, Steve.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you, great.
Well, not for too long. We're going to. Um, alright, so that's pretty much the end of our, our appointments. Uh, we are going to move to a non-public.
Recycling center fees?
Uh, we don't have those.
Oh, wait, yeah, he said we won't, yeah.
The conservation did write a, was it somebody that wrote the request? Asking the board about reducing the salt area on one fifty-six because of the aquifer next to the, um, the gravel pit area? And about us helping support that letter for the state, just thought I'd bring it up. Should we just have them mail something to the state about it? Is that what they do?
Uh, yeah, I had a couple clarifying questions that I wanted to send back to them before you dug into it, um...
I just wanted to-
They identified three different places and, um, I, I think two of them are on State Road, so there's not much we're gonna be able to do there. We can, we can certainly chime in, but, um, let's, maybe we just talk about that on your, at your next meeting, just to-
Nope, it's fine, just wanted to bring it up, say that.
I read it and had a couple things to throw back at them.
Good.
But I'll put that on your twenty-eighth. You are, you're three weeks from your next meeting, because of the next, two weeks from now is a holiday. So just in your internal clock, uh, unless you wanna meet before then, we're regularly scheduled to meet in three weeks.
Unless something comes up that's needed, then we'll just take it from there.
Yeah, and then you're back on the usual.
Yeah.
And with all-
Well, the meeting, the twenty would be the last meeting until we get new elected officers, the next meeting after that.
Next meeting, the meeting after that will be a new board.
Officers and-
Yeah.
Yep. So if you wanna throw another one in there, we can do that, but we're not scheduled to at this point. Salt.
If something becomes tentative, I say we'll throw a meeting in if something doesn't come. That's needed our address, then we will, uh, keep it lighthearted for the month of February.
Yeah.
Since we've been doing a lot of meetings consecutively, might have, nice to have all three break from coming in.
Call, call it Super Bowl President's Day.
Yes.
Yes.
That's pretty much everything that I have. Anybody have anything else they wanna bring up before we go to non-public?
Hi, guys.
Hi, guys, thank you.
I'll make a motion, we go into non-public per RSA ninety-one dash A colon three two A.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, can we have a roll call?
Uh, I, Donna Danus.
I, Tony Dumas.
I, John Moore.
I, Tyler Eaton.
Good night Nottingham, after we get out of non-public, we'll be automatically, uh, ending the meeting and sealing the minutes.